I'm glad to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's the boss. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Seattle King County Southwest Unit and the King County Library Services, I'd like to welcome you to the Highline School District Director Forum. Before we begin, I want to read our land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and coastal Salish people, past. Sir, no, I'm not going to do it while you're talking. If you need to do that, you need to leave. Okay, one at a time.
Here, here.
Pledge allegiance.
And well, but that's not what we're doing right now, sir. Okay, thank you. We would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and coastal Salish people cast in present. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Duamish and coastal Salish tribes. On the agenda, there is a QR code that takes you to the League of Women Voters Seattle King County's webpage. And we would like to point out that the League is sponsoring several homelessness forums. The League does candidate forums. We also do issue forums, and the issues are well researched and often have experts on the panels who speak to these issues. There is also information that's under the heading Vote 411, and that will provide election information as well as other things about the League that are on the website. The other thing that will be on the website is the recording of this forum. So you can go to that if you missed what somebody said or you want to revisit. It will be there. We are also sponsoring next week a forum in Des Moines for the Des Moines City Council, and that will be at Wesley Terrace. And that information is also out there on various platforms, the library and the League of Women Voters website. Now I'd like to turn things over to our moderator, Vicky Rood. She's the world's best.
Thank you, Lauren. That makes it a little tough now. I thought I had a reputation. Our timers this evening, who are a critical part of how smoothly our forum runs, are sitting in the front row, Nancy and Pat. And they will be keeping us on time, our speakers and also you in the audience. And I'll tell you more about that later. Please note, it is League of Women Voters' policy to not allow any video or audio recording of our forums unless it has been authorized in advance by the League. I want to thank our videographer, Thomas Schwanner, who is recording this event. Well, as Lauren mentioned, there'll be a link to this recording and those of our other forums on the League's website within the next few days, or at least prior to the time you mark your bell. We also want to thank the interpreter who is providing assistance this evening. You may have noticed that your program is in two languages. You wanted to say a few words? There you are.
Hola, buenas noches. Quiero mencionar que hay atrás, en el cuarto, perdón, la parte anterior del cuarto, hay traducción simultánea al español, por si necesitan ese servicio. There is a translation service in the back if anyone needs it. And if you could ask other candidates to keep in mind that there may be translation happening. Just, I know you're in a timer, so that's a hard balance, but just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Let me say a quick word about the League of Women Voters. The League is a national, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization whose purpose is to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. Our goal for tonight's forum is to provide school district residents with the information which will help them be informed and knowledgeable voters. You can find more information about the League at the table in the back of the room or by going to our website. Now I'll ask you to turn off your cell phones, including those cellphone cameras or any other device that you have that make noise. The League of Women Voters is committed to fostering civility in public discourse. Civility begins with openness to listening to points of view which may be different from our own and respect for others' rights to hold opinions that differ from ours. With that in mind, we ask that everyone be respectful of the candidates, our timers, and our volunteers. Please remain silent unless you've been recognized to ask your question and hold your applause until the end of the forum. A couple other notes. The restrooms are located on both floors across from the elevator. And in case of an emergency, please exit using the stairs. Now onto our panel of candidates. The Highline School District Board of Directors consists of five members elected in staggered years for four-year terms. School Board members take office in December after the election is certified. Key responsibilities include employing the district superintendent, formulating the budget, developing and approving policies, and setting instructional and learning goals for staff and students. Board members attend two regular meetings each month plus occasional work-study sessions or board retreats. Board meetings are available via live stream for members of the public unable to attend in person. Three seats are up for election this year, two of which are contested. Three candidates agreed to participate in this forum, and you see them before you. One was unable to attend but has sent a representative, whom you will hear from briefly. In the order of their district number, we'll ask each candidate to make an opening statement of no more than three minutes following the opening remarks into your turn. Audience members may pose questions for one or all candidates. You'll have 30 seconds to ask your question, and the candidates will have one minute to answer. I'll then offer each candidate the opportunity for a rebuttal. Rebutts must be no longer than one minute. So please keep these time limits in mind and keep your eye on the timers so you don't know when your time is up. That applies to both the candidates and to you in the audience. League volunteers have index cards and pencils for you. If you didn't get one of these when you came in and would want one, the purpose of this is so that you can write down your question in advance. It really speeds things up because you're not having to think on your feet when you get to the mic. Raise your hand if anybody needs a card or a pencil. Also, when you leave, turn in the pencils again so that we can. All right. In terms of your questions, we'll give everyone in the audience the chance to ask a question before taking follow-ups or multiple questions from the same person. We'll then give each candidate one minute for closing remarks, and this will happen in the reverse order from their opening statement. Candidates, we've asked you to introduce yourselves in three minutes or less. We hope you might tell us why you are running for office, what are your qualifications to be on the school board, and what are your goals for this coming term of office? And let remain in mind you keep your eye on the timers. All right, the candidates running for District One are Michael Lewis and Stephanie Tinholm. Michael, your opening statement. And you three will have to share that now.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Lewis. I am running for Highline School Board because I've spent the last three decades working in a classroom. I'm a music educator in Kent. And you know, the phrase that comes to mind is on the inside courtyard of the NEA's building that says, "We educate America's children." I have taught literally thousands of students over my 30 years of working in a classroom. I really want to bring an LGBTQ voice to the board. I, working in Kent, we just went through a book ban process where the community wanted to pull a book dealing with LGBTQ information from a library, and it turned out to be a huge mudslinging match of kind of not-so-great feelings toward my community. Some of the things that I want to do on the board, as I said, I'm a music teacher. I really feel like coming out of a pandemic and coming into wherever we're at right now in 2023, music and the arts are so needed. Music's the only thing that engages our entire brain, whether we listen to it, we play an instrument, we sing. It just gets those neurological pathways moving. I also really want to focus on eliminating any sort of racism, homophobia, transphobia from policy. These are kids, right, that might be questioning, they might have concerns. We need to make sure that this is the safest environment for them. Lastly, I think I, we really need to focus on diversity. Our children really need to see themselves and the people who educate them seven hours a day. I can remember growing up in the middle of Nebraska and not having another gay teacher to even look up to or to ask questions about what I was going through in my own mind. So really keeping things kid-focused, really keeping things focused on making it just a better place for children. That's my plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Stephanie, your opening statement.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Tinholm. First of all, thank you, everybody, for being here today. It's Tuesday night, it's getting dark early, it's starting to get cold and rainy. So appreciate you being out of your house and being here when you don't have to. A little bit about me, I am a parent in the district. I have two babies, my little angel right here comes everywhere with me, my little cheerleader. And I have a freshman in high school. I've been incredibly involved in my baby's education since day one. I have not missed a single field trip over the years. I'm at all of the events, I'm running booths, super involved. I sit on the Family Action Committee for Highline School District as well as White Center Heights Dual Language Task Force. And I'm also very involved with an organization called SFEB. And if you're not familiar, it stands for Supporting Partnerships in Education and Beyond. And this organization has a number of workshops and conferences, and we really work to advocate for babies in educational spaces. And it allows space for the children also to come to the table and have their own groups. And this one often leads the groups, and they get to decide, like, what do we hate about school? The number one thing is always like the food, right? So they sit down and they figure out, like, what do we do about it? Like, this is our problem, how do we solve our problem? So it teaches them to be advocate. There is, excuse me, an annual, like, end of year, depending of year, event. And my little baby, he got to MC the whole entire thing and lead his own breakout room. So it's a great organization that just really gets the kids involved and teaches them how to advocate for themselves. I'm running because I've been involved, I've been involved for so long. I'm super involved in the community also. I work on the LEED program in Buryan where we work to mitigate systemic barriers for people as well. And I figured if this is something and we're going to put somebody in that seat, it needs to be somebody that's heavily invested in the community, somebody that knows what's going on in Highline, somebody that's taken the time to connect teachers and students and families and parents. And I have a track record of doing that for a number of years. And I want to continue to do that and represent the communities, the families, the babies on the board. Thank you.
The candidates for District Four are Carlos Ruiz and Melissa Petreeni. Carlos, your opening statement.
Hello, welcome, everyone. First, I have to give my youngest a shout out. It's her seventh birthday today. She's out sick, so is her sister, and that's why they couldn't be here. Really excited to be here, thank you, everyone. Really quickly about me, I was born in Costa Rica. My mom's from El Salvador. I came to this country undocumented before my fifth birthday. Lived that way through sixth grade, going through New York City public education system, eventually becoming a citizen after college. Grew up in New York City during the height of the crack epidemic. So a lot of this, the violence was starting to see the fentanyl news kind of rings a little bit true for me. In terms of qualifications, I've been with Seattle Credit Union as a board member for seven years, as the chair for four years. And that's an organization that, let's figure, I would say, than the Highline School Board. It's $1.2 billion in assets. So I'm very familiar with the board process, serving as a board, fiscal responsibility. I'm also on the board of SEED, it's a nonprofit in southeast Seattle. And we deal a lot with providing opportunities for the arts as well as affordable housing. I'm also a very proud member of the Mar Vista PTSA. Yeah, I work as, I work as the VP. And then in terms of why I'm running, obviously, the quality of the education is important to all of us up here. That goes without saying. Also, community engagement, I've been involved in community for a really long time. And I know that it starts with not solutions, but questions, asking the community, what's going on, what do you need, what's missing? Take your empowerment, right? We all remember, a lot of us, the really good teachers we've had in the past, quick show of hands, how many educators past or present are here today? That's, so thank you, thank you all so much for all you do. And we trust you, right, with the most important things in our lives, which are our children. And finally, with the environment, the environment is very important to me. Our district wraps around the airport, and there are, there's already work on the air quality and how it affects learning. So these are the things that I want to focus on when I'm the next director for District Four. Thank you.
Thank you. The other candidate for District Four, Melissa Petreeni, could not be here. However, she did send a representative who will read a statement.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring and to the Buryan Library for hosting this event. I had planned to attend, however, due to unanswered questions that I posed the League weeks ago about the recording agreement, I must forego this event. For those of you who have had specific questions, I welcome your inquiries and will be happy to answer you. Please contact me personally at petreeni@school.com. I'm a mother of six, she was special needs and another with learning challenges. Four years ago, my daughter's four, excuse me, 504 education plan was largely ignored. So I was forced to pull her out of her Highline public school. I needed to personally tutor her to remediate and get my child to where they should have been and be able to read. Up until that year, all of my children had always been in public schools only, and my goal is to help them return. But it is tough to ignore the glaring low academic records of our district anymore. According to Washington State, every two out of three kids fail to meet standards in reading, math, and science. I am ready to support equitable education for all because some families have resources to choose, other options, most do not. Nothing is more equitable than maybe for all our kids can read and have access to quality education. My goal as director would be to have the district make a hard turn back to refocus on academics. We need to let parents contribute and participate in partners in all aspects of their children's education and upbringing. Our teachers, paraeducators, and classified staff deserve more support, higher pay, more control, and simplified expectations so they can focus on the things they are trying to do. While we ask so much of them, and yet we're so hard on them. Our failing record is not a reflection on the teachers, but incentive of the learning standards and the ever-increasing burden we place on the teacher. I hope to encourage better communication that will build trust, partnerships with parents, and respecting family values and beliefs. Throughout my adult life, I have worked with youth and children, including running the autistic therapy center, teaching special needs dance and music classes. I have organized and volunteered youth community and school groups. I've been in the city budget committee, PTA, EBI, inclusive parent groups, Highline Curriculum Committee, advocating for recreational programs, served on the St. Anne Hospital Foundation Board, and now is currently seeking, on a nonprofit that seeks to bring people together across cultural, societal, and political divide. I am thoroughly prepared for the rigor of advocating for all voices and perspectives. By learning and listening, I can help ensure that people we heard respected and valued. I welcome the opportunity to work with, serve with, and support our students, teachers, and parents to bring help to our children's thrive and give them better tools they need to pursue and eat how they choose. Again, I wish I could have attended this event personally, but I look forward to hearing from you at petreeni@school.com. Thank you, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. The candidate for District Five is Azim Hagos, who did not respond to our invitation. I don't believe you're in the audience, are you? Thank you, candidates, for your opening remarks. Next, we will take as many questions as possible from the new the audience. Once again, all candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all questions, even those directed to a specific candidate. Candidate responses will be limited to one minute per question. And I believe we have ample time in our schedule to hear all your questions. You may have 30 seconds to pose your question, and the candidates will have up to a minute to answer. Please come to the microphone and be prepared with your question. You'll see the lead member who is in the the center aisle, and people will just line up behind her. You don't have to rush, I have a question or two I'm going to ask first while we get organized. But that's what our procedure will be. The League member is going to hold the microphone so that that's another way that we can control how brief your question is. If you are unable to come to the microphone, you may write down your question and pass it to a League member. Be sure to put your name on the card, and please write legibly. One of our volunteers will read any questions that come in on cards, but we won't read questions without names. If you're not comfortable asking your question in English, the interpreter assisting us this evening will do so on your behalf. So you simply would need to go to the back of the room where the interpreter is looking. If we run out of time before you get your question answered, we've asked all the candidates to remain after the forum so that you may speak with them directly. Now, as I said, I will kick this off with the first question, and this is for all three of you. And you will have to share in the mic because I'm not letting go of this one. What would you personally do to increase family involvement or develop family relationships with the schools, particularly with those families for whom English is not their primary language? Let's start with you, Michael, and just work down.
I'll ask that again.
What would you personally do to increase family involvement or develop family relationships with the schools, particularly with those families for whom English is not their primary language?
You know, I'm reflecting on being a classroom teacher in a music room. For 30 years, my door has always been open. For 30 years, I have maintained that I develop a relationship with the parents first because then that allows me to know a little bit about that family. And then I can develop that relationship with the child that's in my class. Over those three decades of being in a classroom, I can tell you that I have relationships that still exist of students I taught my first year in the classroom. They've gone on to college, they've now, they're raising their own families, and they're giving their input in their careers and all of that. So really just being as welcoming as possible and inviting people to the table. I think that's where you, you have success. And it doesn't hurt to have food.
Carlos?
This is near and dear to me because it's something that we actually speak about a lot and discuss at the PTSA now and last year. We, I serve now, whenever there's a family that comes in that doesn't speak English at the PTSA meeting, I serve as a translator. I help translate the flyers and all the communications that go out to family. However, I know that it's also, it can be challenging or intimidating for a family to show up and feel like the other because you need the translation. They feel like there's a disruption because I'm speaking while someone else is speaking. So what I would love to explore is having a parallel PTSA, not a different PTSA, still one family, because I don't believe in that separation. I don't mind making time, taking up my own time to cover the material that was covered in the English PTSA for the Spanish one, pilot that, and then try it out for other languages. Thank you.
Stephanie. Yeah, I think, first of all, utilizing the family engagement specialists that the district has. I think Highline does a pretty good job at having very culturally diverse family engagement specialists, which I've seen personally to be a great benefit to the community. Another thing is utilizing language translation, I'm sorry. I know a lot of the schools currently, when they put out paper, whether it be physically paper or an email or even a text message, the text will come out in multiple languages. Also, I said, as I said, on the Dual Language Task Force for White Center Heights, and we really engage different communities to get their input, to see, like, what languages do we want? White Center Heights, starting this year, added Somali after already having Spanish and Vietnamese, and the Somali was decided because they engaged with the community. Also, having different cultural events, right? Where different cultures are highlighted, food is always a plus. Having different entertainment from different cultures, I think, is beneficial as well. I think it's also hard sometimes to engage with people that are not native English speakers. So giving them papers when they come to school.
Thank you. Okay, we will start with the line now. And remember, we have timers in the front, so when your 30 seconds is up, they'll be holding up a stop sign. Okay, your name and your question.
Hi, my name is Giannis, and thank you for coming so that we can meet you and hear what you have to say. The OSPI reports that over 66% of Highline School District students do not meet state standards for reading in English, and over 78% don't meet standards in math. What is your plan for turning this around?
Well, let's start in the same order. We'll start with Michael.
I do hope we can switch the order. It changes the, your answer to the question. I think when you're looking at data, right, you can look at data in a thousand different ways and interpret it in a thousand different ways. Speaking at another point of, to another point of data, right, 58% of Highline students don't attend regularly. Well, attending regularly for that data is missing no more than two times a month. That's excused or unexcused. And we did just get it from our governor that a high school student or a secondary student can take a mental health day, and it doesn't count against them at any time. So really digging into the data and trying to get to the root cause would be my first choice. A lot of that falls on the shoulders of the principals that are in the building and teachers that are in the classroom, right, and how they're going to interpret that data. Because it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. We've got how many languages spoken within our district? You've got to really focus and read the data so it's authentic.
Stephanie, you're second on this one. Yeah, I think it would start with digging deep. Yeah, I think it would start with digging deep into why that is. When my baby starts having trouble in school and is maybe falling behind on his grades, I sit down and I talk to him, what's going on? I didn't say your name, it could have been your brother. You didn't do this assignment. Like, what what really is it? I think it's important to really look at the data. I've spoken to a number of my babies in the neighborhood, all my little nieces and nephews, and even older kids I've spoken to to see like what the issue is. I think figuring that out. I think also providing adequate support services at the schools is important because the teachers only have so much time, they can only do so much, as well as the deans and the principals and vice principals. So making sure that there's sufficient support in terms of mental health clinicians and so like, not psychologists, I'm sorry, and social workers. I mean, even S U Ds is important. So they're actually people that have the time to sit down and have these conversations with the babies.
Carlos?
Thank you, Janice. What's nice going last is I get to say ditto to both of them. In addition to that, I've had I think Barbista does a really good job, their educators, of connecting with the families. And I know I've had conversations with my daughter's teachers. Whenever there's been a concern, my oldest was that COVID kindergartner, right? That started and then had a very different educational experience than a lot of us did. And what I learned at the school does, you know, they have these blocks of learning time, two hours plus of reading, hour and a half, two hour blocks of math. And during that, they take and dedicate time where the students have worked with individually. So these are all responses to COVID. And I think it's still really early to tell. I think we have to care, obviously, and monitor. And I'm glad that you brought that up because that is really important. You can't fix what you don't know is broken. But I think we also have to be patient with our educators, with the district, and see what impact some of these changes are having. Oh, sorry.
They should have given you a look.
We'll go to our next question.
What do you guys think about dual language?
Jane, please.
My name is Giovanni Stefani-san. What do you guys know about dual language? I like the first person to start is my mom.
Thank you for your question, Giovanni. As you know, I'm a huge advocate of dual language. You are currently in the dual language classes at your middle school, despite us not being native Spanish speakers. I did have to fight for it, which is another reason I said on the Dual Language Task Force because initially it was only offered to native speakers of whatever the languages they were interested in joining. I think it's incredibly important. I think that the study's showing that the neuroplasticity in the baby's brain, learning a second language early on, is really important to look at also. I think it's also it also comes down to equity. I know a lot of people who can afford to send their kids to schools where they're in dual language classes. A lot of people, especially in this community, they can't afford to do so. So to have that opportunity, I think, is really important and really amazing. I think we do a really good job at offering the dual language here. I mean, even people that are not in that homeschool can be transported there. And I'm really excited to hopefully expand that going further. Michael, will you do this one second?
I, before living in Washington, I taught in Denver Public Schools, a district of about a hundred thousand students, heavily Latino. And dual language schools are all over the place. There's probably ten elementaries within Denver Public Schools that are all dual language. Every educator in the building is a dual language educator. They speak both Spanish and English. And so I'm not sure that I really understand why it would be a money issue, although I do believe in our BIPOC communities, there is an access issue. But it it would seem that it would be just possible to do it more and more in Highline. It shouldn't cost anything extra.
Thank you, Giovanni. Definitely important to me, having my daughters, because for one of the definitions of a culture, right, is its language. And that's very important to be able to maintain that and pass that on. I my daughters aren't very fluent in Spanish, and I own definitely a part of that. The challenge that I've had with that is that my wife is not a Spanish speaker. And oh, really? Oh, okay.
Sorry, wrong.
And so having that ability to offer another language at school just helps with retaining culture. So I would absolutely love and support more dual education in Highline School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
Hello, excuse me. My name is Maryanne. I want to know what specific plan you have to keep children, parents, and staff working towards meeting academic standards to meet the needs of everything from gifted to special needs. I had two graduates, one of each of those two boys, and also hard work to keep children safe. As a parent, I've had some issues with that part. I would like to see more encouragement of dealing with issues right away and making sure each child is safe. If there's a language barrier, we need a translator, and that's what I suggested because sometimes children don't know.
Carlos, will you do this one first?
Thank you, Maryanne. I definitely have, being a parent of a student in the district, helps kind of understand some of those issues that you brought up. In terms of a specific plan, I have ideas right now, but I would hesitate to give you a specific plan because I haven't spoken and met with the community as a whole. To me, that's where I think any plan or for the beginning of one class to start. And then even with the district as large as it is, you can have situations where the you could call something the safety issue, but it shows up differently in different parts of the district. So for me, it has to start first with a comprehensive understanding of what the challenges are and then roll that into a plan. But I wouldn't want to speak out of turn without first connecting with the community as a whole.
Michael?
Thank you, Maryanne. So I really think that, first of all, I am what was labeled as twice exceptional. I was highly gifted in math and science, and I was learning disabled in reading. I'm dyslexic. And so that process really taught me places where I did feel safe. You were speaking about safety. But I think it really comes down to hiring quality I D teachers that and hiring the mass of them to help alleviate the work. To be a special ed teacher in the state is insane, the amount of paperwork that has to go into one kid just to get them accommodations or to get them their needs. And so we really, in this, in the year 2023, we are facing a horrific teacher shortage and an even more horrific teacher shortage in special ed. So we really have to find ways to bring more people, more professionals to the table so that we can service those kids to the best of our ability.
Stephanie? I'm going to say ditto with Carlos, and thank you for your question, Maryanne. But I think it's important to first look into what what's causing this? Why are the scores what they are? Really dig deep into that before I can actually say exactly what a plan could potentially be. And the same goes for safety. I think that Highline generally is pretty safe. We've been in the district for some time, and I've not personally had issues. They're incredibly concerning. I think part of it also is having adequate staff. Keep going back to that. Because safety looks more like looks like more than just your physical safety. I think emotional and mental safety is really important as well, especially after the pandemic. A lot of the babies are really suffering. My eldest son, he started middle school online and struggled. He, don't say your brother, I shared it. He cried when I told him that he was going to have to actually go to physical school because he had so much anxiety. So really just having those supports in schools. And I'm going to keep going back to, yeah, just digging into what's the problem? What's going on?
Before going to the next question, it is our policy to allow the candidates to provide more comments as a rebuttal if they've heard something that stimulates that. So we will give each a chance. These are thirty seconds. Carlos, will you do your start?
I'm going to use this to just keep talking. Part of it, like what I really want to expand on, because of my professional experience, is in strategic planning. And part of it is, when I look at the district, it's a collection of cities, right? So to think that one strategy could be applied to all, I think it's it's a little naive, right? There's what my work in Des Moines is not necessarily was going to work in Buryan. And even Buryan, as large as it is, you could have pockets where one strategy won't apply to all. So really, when I talk about it, you have to get in there, get into community, and listen first. That's what my, I guess that is my strategy. That is my plan for is to listen.
Michael?
Just to add to what Stephanie mentioned was, you know, we just had teachers raise their hand in this room. I can tell you that I was boots on the ground when we all were sent home and handed a computer and said, go figure out your Zoom classes and get your kids to attend. And then we switched over to what they thought was the fix, which was teams. But then there was still no rhyme or reason, right? We would have kids sitting in the middle of their beds doing school. So we were all in a learning curve. So I think it's important that when we're thinking about kids and their needs, we also have to think about the environment that they attend school in, and that's a teacher's classroom. So it it was a struggle for everybody.
Stephanie, do you have anything to add? Our next question?
Hi, my name is Ben Fulter. I teach elementary and higher grades. Highline Public Schools has a number of mental health clinics on site, and contracts with mental health service providers. Do you agree that Highline students should have the ability to make choices over their mental and physical health and health permission under guard?
I think it's Stephanie's time to go first on the question.
A little question. I think that, I mean, right now, as it stands per HIPAA laws, a child, once they're thirteen years old, a parent can't access any of that anyways. I have a child with chronic health issues. I go to all of his appointments regularly. They're pretty intense, but I can't log in and I can't see his health issues. I respect that privacy. We obviously go together, I know what's going on. Especially when it comes to mental health, I think it's really important because, I mean, quite frankly, the home life could be the cause of whatever distress they're going through and going to the school or the mental health clinician at the school for. So if you then require that the mental health clinician involves the family, especially if it's not to a point where the mandated reporter has to report something to CPS, then that child is just having to go back home, and it makes just an even more unsafe environment for them.
Carlos?
Thank you, Ben. I will also support the privacy for children. Both my daughters are first and fourth grader, have a therapist that they see regularly. And part of what makes it successful for them is that they know that we respect that privacy. And we also trust that the provider is going to come to us with anything that we need to know. So I think I think Stephanie really hit the nail on the head when she said it's also a safety concern, right? I went once with a to a doctor visit with my wife, and they asked her, do you felt safe at home? And I was sitting right next to her. And I said, well, how is she going to answer if she's not safe, right? Because I'm the problem, if I would be the problem. So that is, to me, I think, a really big concern where you have to respect their privacy.
Michael?
Growing up as a gay kid, I can tell you that I wouldn't, I grew up in a very safe family. I grew up in a single-parent household. I was a latchkey kid. And my mom accepted me from the moment I was born until the moment she died last summer. But we do have parents who disown their gay children. They kick them out into the world at fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years old and say, go figure out life on your own. Or just take your own life, right? End it. That, to me, is the most strict confidentiality ever. As an educator, I am a mandatory reporter. If I even sense that there is a safety issue within the home, I have no choice. I have to call CPS. Otherwise, my license can be taken away from me forever.
Any other comments that any of you wish to make on that subject? Okay, we'll go to the next question.
Hello, candidates. My name is Crystal Marks. Thank you also to all the teachers and Highline staff here. I'm a mom of three kids in the Highline School District, two with I E P. How will you work with other local governments to support Highline families? And please be as specific as you can.
We'll have Carlos take this one first.
Thank you, Crystal. I think I'm a big believer in collaboration and that that's how solutions are, the best solutions are found. There isn't any one societal issue that any one group or part of government can solve. I think it takes all of us. For example, a child's performance in school might be due to food insecurity, housing insecurity, some kind of medical issue. And as an example of what I look to do specifically, I have a long relationship of working with the Port of Seattle. So when I talk about the environment, I want to lean on that relationship. I am endorsed by Commissioner Hawkins from the Port of Seattle. We have a good working relationship. And I look to them to be able to sit down and say, now, how do we measure what's happening? And how do we address it? Thank you.
Michael?
That's kind of a hard question. Thanks for asking it, Crystal. Because Highline sits within five communities, four of which have their own governmental bodies, it really, to be honest with you, could take twenty school board directors and probably not hit all the bases. I think you you really just have to fall back on developing those relationships and really getting out and speaking to and listening to 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 other people and how you can come to the table for the support of of the district or of the community, what I have here.
Yeah, I think that Highline does a pretty good job. At this point, there are mental health clinicians in the school and psychologists. They connect students to Navos and their families if need be. We cannot familiar with Navos. It's a community health plan. They offer, well, they did offer healthcare, not anymore, but mental health and S U D services. I think it's important to partner with different organizations. If, like Carlos said, people are experiencing food insecurity or if somebody needs a clothing bank or housing resources, there's a domestic violence shelter and a family shelter in the area. So being able to refer families to those places as well, I think, is important. Not another local government, but White Center Heights actually does also have a resource center, which Shana Cohen, Cohen, I'm sorry, of her own accord, put together and accepts donations and partners with the White Center Food Bank and gets fresh deliveries. I know a lot of people that go to the food bank only get things like canned goods, and she makes sure that there's fresh fruits and vegetables every single week. She has a clothing bank. She has classes where she has teaching people interview skills and helps people with their resumes. And I think implementing something like that in another school would be amazing as well.
Thank you. My next question?
My name is Felix Spirit. With some of your schools, I've been emphasizing college admissions. When working as a substitute teacher, I have taught multiple high school students who have not been in a single homework decision in three or four years or longer. Obviously, they're not college material. What do you think of returning to vocational programs like auto shop and preparation for apprenticeships in trades?
Michael?
Well, as I shared earlier, I'm a first-generation college student from a single-parent Well, as I shared earlier, I'm a first-generation college student from a single-parent household. I was a latchkey kid when the term latchkey kid was coined. Um, college isn't always the answer. It was the answer for me, right? That's, I knew that I wanted my education. I'm incredibly educated. And, um, none of that came from my mom. She has an eighth-grade education. She couldn't help me do the FAFSA. She couldn't help me do any of my college intern's essays. She couldn't help me do any of it. So really focusing on, um, that college isn't the only path. I'm also from a, an incredible motorhead family where I've got a lot of mechanics and a lot of body shop guys that were, live in my family. And that might be an option, right? The trades are incredibly important. You know, you know about anybody in this room, but the last time I paid a plumber was like $2,000. They make really good money for skills that I really don't wanna do. But if that's your calling, then by all means, college isn't the only way to get the, the golden egg, if you will.
Carlos?
Thank you, Alex. Um, I'm a, so first, I just, I would, I don't know that I would write off a child and say that they're not college material necessarily just because they're not handing in homework. Uh, but I, I think I get the spirit of your question. And I'm a huge supporter of the trades. Um, I recently had the honor and privilege to go to, um, the P S, uh, P S S C. Uh, and, uh, we actually have a representative here as a recommender. Um, highly recommend you go visit there if you're not familiar with it. Um, they have so many amazing programs. And it's not just trades, but it's also a lot of, um, technology, like teaching them video, uh, arts and where they could go out and learn how to make commercials for, for companies and, uh, T-shirt printing. It's amazing what they're teaching there. Uh, so I definitely believe in Highline's line of making, like, teaching to the student and what they are going to be.
Stephanie? Thank you for your question, Alex. Um, I would echo what Carlos said. I don't think it's fair to write children off as not being college material for not turning in homework. I was one of those children who barely turned in homework when I was at school. I was not doing much and I was written off by my school. I ended up not even going to college until I was thirty years old. And it's not because I didn't care and I wasn't college material. I had a lot of things going on at home and expensive trauma. Um, so I think it's important to notice that and to really look at the children and figure out what's going on, rather than just writing them off as not caring or not wanting to do the work. Um, but I also am a proud, that goes by fast, a proud graduate of the 2017 cohort for A New. And if you're not familiar with A New, it's a pre-apprenticeship training. I'm a huge advocate of the trades. I have a number of tradespeople in my family. I think it's really important to have that option in communities. I mean, you get to get paid to learn and you get paid pretty well at that, never mind the benefits. So I think it's important, especially in marginalized communities, for these kids to have these opportunities.
Um, I'm sorry, we've got a line, a long line of questions, so we're gonna skip rebuttals at this point. But if you want, after the program is over, talk further with that person or others.
Good evening, candidates. Thank you all so much for being here. I wish that all candidates would have arrived this evening. Um, my name is Jennifer Pichamba and I'm a proud union educator in the Takwilla School District. And I'm also a proud just union household in general. Um, recently at a school board meeting, a parent came to, um, have a comment about a supposed transgender substitute teacher at my alma mater, Gregory Heights Elementary School. Um, as a board member, what way would you be supportive of that educator? And also, um, our transgender youth in our community, cuz there's quite a few. Um, what way would you be able to support them? And like, how would you have handled that situation?
Stephanie, will you take that first?
Thank you for your question, Jennifer. Question, Jennifer. Um, I think that it's fair that everybody feels safe and welcomed in the schools. I think if there's an issue that arises with a specific teacher where they do something that is inappropriate, then that should definitely be addressed. I don't think it's fair to discriminate solely based off of however they choose to present themselves, whatever pronouns they use. Um, how that would be handled? I think I would, I would support the teacher, obviously. Um, if that's the parent's choice not to have their child in that classroom, then that's their choice. But I don't think that it's fair that the teacher should potentially lose their job or not be allowed to essentially exist because that makes somebody feel uncomfortable.
Michael?
I have to watch that board meeting and listen to that very cringey, um, comment from that parent. Um, so everybody's aware, the child called home and said that there was a man dressed in, dressed in a dress and had fake boobs and that his mom told him not to be a part of that. The, the parent came to the school board meeting and expressed that it, um, it might be gender dysphoria, it might be that they're trans, but it also could be that they just got some erotic thrill out of dressing like a woman. And at the very end of her comment, what set me over the edge was that she called him a pervert. As somebody who grew up gay, I can tell you that it just burns my soul to hear somebody call me a pedophile, to call me an indoctrinator, to call me a groomer, to call me any other slur that is nothing even close to what I am. I'm an educator. I'm a human being. And I don't need to judge anybody else, right? We're all different in this room. I don't need to make a judgment call about you because I don't know any of your struggles that you take home every day. And you don't know mine.
Carlos?
Um, thank you, Jennifer, for that question. I was at that board meeting and it was very disturbing. I think it's important to not lose sight that when we talk about safety in schools, it's safety for all, not just our children, but our educators and educators as well. And, uh, I think the way it was handled at the board meeting, I think it's the only way that it could be handled at the board meeting. Uh, the way that all comments are handled, uh, they're just, it's just a listening session. I think it is important to then follow that up and check in with the educator and see how they were impacted by it. What can the school, the district do, um, to make them feel more welcome and supported? And again, this all goes back to safety at schools for everyone, especially in this school.
Next question?
My name is Stephen Lampere. I'm the original gay council member for the city of Buryan. And I'd like to ask the candidates, are you willing to go on the record and say that you support the district purchasing books that affirm the identities of LGBTQ children? Please.
Carlos?
Thank you, Original Stephen. I mean, it's almost comical that we have to even answer this question, but of course, right? Um, I don't know, I don't even need the full minute for this because there's, there's no other answer. But yes, of course, right? Absolutely. Everything, when we talk about diversity, right? It's all diversity that our children should be exposed to. And, um, yeah, it's, uh, yes, absolutely. You know, easily go on record with that.
Stephanie?
Yes. I will also say that I have hundreds of books. My children tell me I'm not allowed to buy anymore because we don't have room for them. You'll find room. And looking at the banned book list, I have most of those books. And a lot of them are books that I read as a child that really shaped me as a child. And if somebody's uncomfortable with a specific book, then that's their prerogative to not read the book. But that doesn't mean that my children or anybody else's child that's interested in seeing themselves representative, representative should not have that opportunity because it makes one person or one family uncomfortable.
Michael?
One billion percent, yes. Um, kind of an anecdote. My high school English teacher just passed away, uh, within the last six months. And as students of hers, Iris Kennedy was her name, and she really pushed me. I struggled at reading, but she pushed me every day to read and read and read. But we, in her honor, at my little tiny town of five hundred public library, all of her former students purchased banned books and sent them to the library so that they could be on shelves. Simply because one parent doesn't want their child to read a book? That's a conversation between that parent and that child. It's not that parent's job to police the entire public and what the other children can read. So yes, one hundred percent, yes.
We have time for just one more question. As I said earlier, if you want to stay around and ask your questions afterwards, I think our candidates would welcome that.
Good evening, my name is Wendy. I'm one of Highline's schools with the culture of belonging. And it's described as a culture where we welcome and, and everyone's valued and safe. So how will you make sure that all students, regardless of culture or faith-based, how will you help to make sure all of them are safe?
Stephanie, will you take this first?
Yeah, I, I wanna say that Highline does a really good job of holding the promise to know each student by name. Um, when I go to my children's schools, we've been at a few schools over the years, well as my different nieces and nephews. I follow the babies in the neighborhood, my nieces and nephews. So if you hear me refer to hundreds of them, don't mind me. But they know the children, they know who they are, they know their families, they know their strengths. They really take the time. I think that the social emotional learning, um, is really important too because it really takes the children when there's an issue and it sits down and it talks about what just happened? Why did you make this choice? What choice could we have made better in the future? How did this affect somebody that I just knocked them upside the head with a ball? And how can we maybe sit here and talk about it? Uh, they're gonna decide if they want to be friends after that or not. I think that is really important. Um, yeah, I think we're doing a pretty good job. Definitely should keep it up.
Michael?
As I've said a couple times, right? My beliefs are my beliefs. Your beliefs are your beliefs. I think it's a great question. I think every kid should feel safe to thrive in their environment. Every employee within the district should feel safe to thrive in their environment. And just respect everybody else's beliefs, right? It's not my job to judge what religion you choose to believe in or what religion I choose to believe in or not believe in, whether you're gay, straight, black, green, brown, whatever. Just respect everybody's, yeah, just respect everybody.
Carlos?
Uh, thank you, Wendy. Um, I think that speaks a lot to social emotional learning that's being covered in school. Uh, a big part of that is understanding and having respect and appreciation for everyone that makes up the school. So I would continue to support that and expand on it. Um, I do believe in exposure to other cultures and ways of life helps us all grow and understand, uh, anything different than our own, right? That's why they say travel is one of the best ways to combat racism and bigotry. So we can bring a little bit of that, I think, uh, to schools. I know Marissa does a really great job of that. Um, so that's why I would love to continue to expand on social emotional learning and exposure to, uh, different ways of life.
Can you respond to the last question?
Uh, this will be our last question.
It's a repeat, so it's the same one the city councilor's got last, excuse me, the city county candidate's got last week. What, the last time you changed your mind about anything you consider a consequence? What was, what persuaded you to change your mind?
What, so look at me?
Stephanie?
Carter, my name's Carter.
Thank you for your question, Carter. Last time I changed my mind was about running for school board. It would be never something that I ever aspired to do or even imagined myself doing even six months ago. I have been incredibly active in my kids' schools and the community. So somebody actually asked me to run. And at first I was like, "You're absolutely crazy." Like, that, what do I look like sitting on a school board? I took two months to think about it. Um, and I realized that I'm here, like, I'm deeply, deeply invested and involved. Um, so who better to be in this seat than me? Uh, and that would be the last time I changed my mind cuz I went from an absolutely not to I would love to.
Michael?
It wasn't really a change my mind, but it's definitely a regret. So, um, at NEA National Education Association Representative Assembly in Chicago, not this past summer, but the summer before, my mom unexpectedly died. For the state of Washington, I am the pack captain for three hundred and forty delegates, where I'm trying to shake every dime out of them that I can to put into the fund for public education and children. And I had a choice. I could have gone on a plane and gone down south and spent the last moments with my mom or I could have just compartmentalized it like I did and just kept working because I knew if I went one direction, I was gonna crumble. And I, I didn't, I could hang things together. Thankfully, I've had time to process that and, and deal with that. But it is definitely a regret that I might have made the wrong choice.
Carlos?
Uh, thank you, Carter. I'm glad I went to ask cuz I had to really think about something. Um, but I think, uh, something that comes to the top of mind for me is, two nights ago, my oldest daughter was asking for help finding PJs and I just said to her, um, "Figure it out." And usually that's a comment, I'm like, "What have you tried, right? Tell me what you've tried." And then, uh, try to find a solution yourself first and then come to me if you're stuck. And when I put her down, she said, um, you know, Daddy, it hurt my feelings when you said, "Figure it out." And it was because she felt like I wasn't supportive, I wasn't even listening to her at first. So that's something I regret. We had a conversation and it's, I think, really important for me to tell my daughters when I'm wrong and that made a mistake cuz I want them to feel that it's safe for them to make mistakes. For all of us, even our educators, I'll tell you, once on the board, I'm gonna make a mistake. Uh, so I think that's something that, um, I regret, but I learned from her and I hope to do better by her in the future.
Carlos, just hold on to the mic. We're going to the closing statements now and you will go first.
Okay, um, I do wanna apologize ahead of time because I do have a seven-year-old celebrating a birthday today and she's staying up even though she's sick. So I am gonna have to immediately afterwards. But, uh, electcarlosruiz.com, reach out to me. I'll gladly have, have a cup of coffee with anybody at any time. Um, thank you to our translators. Uh, thank you, uh, Vicky, Nancy, Pat, Thomas, and the entire League of Women Voters. Thank you, everyone, for coming out on a Tuesday, uh, to come out here. Um, please know that I deeply care for all the children in our district and it's something that I'm looking to support. I'm looking to support the work that, continue to support, that our current, uh, school board has already done. I wanna build on that, not start over. Um, and the environment is really important to me and air quality, uh, as well as making sure that our teachers are properly supported. Uh, they feel safe, right? That comment that came up earlier. Um, and again, thank you for your time and I welcome you to, uh, reach out to me.
Stephanie?
Also, I'm very grateful for King County Library for hosting this, as well as League of Women Voters, I'm sorry, for having this and everybody for being here again. Um, as I said, I've been deeply invested in the community and are babies protecting and nurturing them for a long time. And I'm super excited to continue doing that as your new school board member. You can also find my website, stephanieforhighline.com, and that four is spelled out F O R. Michael, a lot of people use the number four, so I clarify that.
Also to echo the other two candidates, thanks, King County Library System, League of Women Voters, everybody in the audience, and thank you, teachers, those of you who are here. I definitely feel the love. Um, I, um, can only say that, you know, I have nurtured and helped and guided and shown the way to thousands of children throughout my three decades in the classroom. And I wanna continue that work as a board director. I think I, um, bring, uh, a great candor to the position. I also would bring an LGBTQ voice to the board, which I think is important. I think it, it, um, really helps me center what my focus has always been. My first-year teaching, I remember a principal coming in and telling me, "We are in the business of children. We're not in the business of selling cars or computers or anything else. We're in the business of educating children." And I believe that I am the best candidate to do that because I have focused on those children's needs for thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we close, I believe there are candidates for other offices in the audience this evening. If so, would you stand and introduce yourself and tell us what office you're ready for?
And I will tax City Council, but not run against the county.
Tommy Anna Meriwether, if you guys may come.
Patricia Hudson, Uriah City Council, position four.
Crystal Marks, Uriah City Council, position six, not against Patricia.
I also understand that the district superintendent is present. Is that so? Well, he was going to be here, but I guess that's okay. I do want to remind you about some voting details. The election is on November 7. And you can register up until that date in Washington State if you have not done so. There's information on the back table about how to register, how to change your registration if necessary. Also, if, you can sign up for the ballot alert program. Signing up for that means you'll get an email or a text message when your ballot is mailed, when it's received, if there is a problem reconciling your signature, and when it's been counted. Voter pamphlets will be nailed on October 17. Ballots will be mailed out to all voters on October 18 and must be postmarked or dropped in drop box by November 7. So please remember to register. Please remember to vote. And thank you so much for coming. You are a wonderful participatory audience and we appreciate that. Let's thank them.